I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, room code.
Alderman, uh, an actor, here, Alderman Zenita.
Here.
Alderman Burke, Kathy Burke, here. Oh, Kathy Burke, the cop.
Here.
Approve the agenda.
And make a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion made, taking all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, that, most of us come through to approve the consenting agenda.
Make a motion, Chair, for the consent agenda.
Motion made, taking all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Keith, we're gonna take you further, on further form, he, uh, he wants to talk to the board about, well, Frank, just tell us who you are and what's your exact set and what you wanna do.
Okay. My name's Keith Robinson, I have a company called Long Range Network, uh, it's a wireless internet supplier. Um, I started this about four years ago, uh, so a background on it, uh, my, my family, Simcoe Stone was a family business of ours and, um, we were trying to research a way to get internet out to our quarries. And about the time I figured out how to do it, COVID hit, and I started hearing about families that were struggling, you know, there was more and more, folks that were working from home and kids that had to do schoolwork at home and, um, I'd go home and I'd see my kids, my, my wife pulling each other's hair out, and we haven't high-speed internet, so I thought, you know what, I, from what I just learned, I think I can help. So, I went to the city of Perryville and, uh, worked out a deal with, with them to hang some radios in, uh, in the air on some towers and, before you know it, they started blowing up, you know, the business was, was great and they tried to figure out a way to, um, tell the family business I had to leave, my dad, you know, and, fortunately, about the same time, he came to me and said that Simcoe was getting an offer, we interested in selling, so I thought, that's great, time was perfect, so, so here I am, a few years later, uh, company's doing very well and looking to grow, and I've had some leads from, from this area come through on the website and, this is a market I'm pretty, very interested in, I think it's, it's needed in this area. So, I'm, I'm here today to, to ask if we might be able to use maybe a water tower or two to hang some of our radios on, uh, to, to be able to supply good high-speed internet to, to the area. I currently now have, or we're, we're working to deal out with the, with that big silo, uh, down there on the bottom area, um, but it doesn't quite cover the whole community, I wanna make sure I get as much as I can, so, I'd need a little help, I wanna know, might be interested in working with me on that. I, I have worked, uh, with the city of Perryville, I mean, we're working pretty good together, we've got three of their water towers right now with my, with our stuff on it. Those are the first towers that I've had. We've also got some one, we're building around the county as well, we've got probably twenty locations right now, towers that we've built or, um, you know, situation like what we're, what I'm asking for here, so, yeah, I guess that's, that's one here. Sir, do you want to give a rant? Yes. Yeah. And what kind of money, or is the, it's open to discussion, or? Yeah, it's open for discussion, um, there's not, oh, it's not like a cellular company kind of thing, it's, there's not a, a massive amount of money here, you know, there's, there's some stuff, you know, some, something I'd be willing to work with on the area, you know, when you talk about what some of the other deals that I've had and that tends to work pretty good, you know, it's roughly that, oh, thousand and fifteen hundred dollars a year kind of thing, is what we usually do. We would try and get it set up to where we have our own electric, you know, where we're not using the city electric or anything like that, we always use, every, we don't, with all the accounts that we have with citizens right now, we use the minimum, you know, we've never really even gone over what they would charge us for, you know, let's say forty-five dollars or something like that, but, um, we have, something we'd be talking about.
I did, then we had to make one pretty dark, do you remember what happened on that, back a long time ago and?
Uh, that was, uh, I didn't remember what it was, but we was changing some things around and, so, doing one of the water towers, like you're talking about, um, 'cause I'm over the water and sewer.
Okay.
I've been working here for years, so, um, with our standards, we're like, we got our nine-one-one system on top of our water tower right now and it's antenna, so, now your radio frequency ain't gonna interfere with our radio frequency.
I, I don't believe it will, I'd like to know more about what frequency you're using, you know, 'cause from what I've seen so far, it's a completely different frequency than what we use. Now, we could, we could throw some test stuff up, some test stuff up there as well, just to, to make sure, you know, before we get too hot and heavy with it.
And then the other, the other stipulation that I had personally, uh, 'cause I climb these towers, um, putting them on the railing of the ladders or putting them in the way of a hatch or putting them on a bit, you know, a V and R and like that, and I didn't like that.
I understand, sir.
Um, so technically, like right now, I know that nine-one-one's got their antenna fastened, uh, up the side of our tower, it's actually on our, uh, form at the top of the tower where it's out of our way, and then they basically built a tower, uh, same as the tower up to put their antenna. Now, I don't know how that would go about with you cutting the radio on theirs, or if you'd have to talk to them, see if it's okay to go up the side of the tower and put it on the same, same pole or not, that's, it goes up on our water tower up here, we don't have a catwalk or anything around it.
Right.
And then the tower for the gas station, we got a flat top up there, so there's no catwalk around that either, so it's, um, it's just basically open, it's the only, we have one to fly out of now, okay, so, that'd be stipulations through the city or wherever, how they would want to see it from that, you know, so.
Sure.
But I don't see a problem with it, I mean, if it helps get internet, you're gonna be awesome, because, I mean, like, personally myself, I got an AT&amp;T, you know, I can't even get on my internet half the time, because, uh, everybody else are doing it.
The same, usually about this time is when it starts crashing.
Yeah, it's a good time right now, for sure, that's, that's where it will.
Everything is slow, wasn't getting out, around this time, six, seven o'clock.
Any more, again, quick.
What's your, like, what do you anticipate, uh, usage from the community, if there's, you know, three hundred and fifty families here, people, three hundred and fifty, four hundred people? Is it like by household, and assume it's by household? Are you shooting, you got like fifty percent or seventy percent obviously from the area?
Well, I'm looking to cover, from a coverage standpoint, I wanna get as close to a hundred percent as possible. I've got some coverage maps here that I brought, right, I've got some other stuff too, kind of in line with what you talked about, there, they do have some magnetic type mounts that I was, that we're looking at to, to use, because I think it is something less intrusive.
And that's what?
We climb towers too, there's no way we would wanna get in the way of a ladder and stuff like that.
Yeah, 'cause we got right now, like, their cables is magnetic to the side of the tower and it's out of our way, it's just,
Yeah.
It's just stipulation, I know how some, some contractors think they can just put it wherever, I say that to you, but I'm, I see it happen.
Oh, I understand, I totally understand. So here, this is kind of what my coverage maps, now, the, the thing with this app, you know, the red is good, um, the thing with this application I'm using with the software, sometimes they don't compensate for some of the trees and stuff, they're, they're kind of hidden away, but it does a pretty good basic job.
So you're looking for three locations?
Uh, I've got three on there just as I was running the scenarios and stuff like that, but what we'd like to do is, you know, get started with maybe one water tower and see what the coverage just look like, see where the holes are in terms of what, where they are compared to what the software said they were gonna be and, you know, we find some ways to, to bounce around and try and cover as much of the community as possible.
Is this by G or?
So, this is, it's completely, it's a different kind of terminology with the, uh, with the technology, but we do, I'll give you an idea here, my first market was in Lake Perry, uh, that was probably one of my biggest markets, I do have customers getting download a hundred megabytes a second, which is more than really anybody would ever use, you know, like to get, for that perspective, for anybody that wants to start streaming, they require, you know, Netflix for instance requires about fifteen. So, that kind of gives you an idea, uh, you know, my biggest package there is that middle plan, it's the ninety-five dollar mark one, and that gives, that one's built for the streamers that, that, you know, that wanna watch Netflix and stuff like that, and have the cable or whatever. So we, the, the speeds that we have are gonna be true high speeds, um, and one of the biggest questions I'll get is, uh, what happens when things start slowing down, are you gonna slow down at peak time and stuff like that? Our intent all along has been to, to engineer our network for, right now, you know, five o'clock to, to ten o'clock range where you see the highest usage. So when we start to see things slow down, you know, it's either because of a, you know, a radio or two is oversubscribed, so we can upgrade that radio real quick and easy, you know, 'cause I'm here, I'm local, and, uh, you know, really care about this community and we're doing what we do. Another option is, is adding more bandwidth to our network overall, that, you know, depends on where that bottleneck is, so we'll fix the bottlenecks, you know, we're, we're in the middle of doing that right now. I just bought a building in Perryville to enable me to, to add more bandwidth to my territory, so, we are starting to see, we're on the cusp of oversubscription right now, so we're, I'm gonna double what I have available, so we do not slow down, that's a, you know, if I end up like all my competition, then I'm kind of wasting my time. You know, I, I've got higher standards than that and I wanna, I wanna make sure that what I say I can offer out there, so. I got some pictures here, just a peeling, some of the stuff that I took, this is our electrical enclosures that are bottom of the, of the tower there in Perryville, and here's a couple pictures of some of the equipment that we put up on the tower, uh, just to kind of give you, just an idea of what, what the equipment would look like and stuff like that. And then, uh, yeah, here's, I'm not sure how, how much you really wanna see, but here's some of the mounts and stuff that we were talking about with bat nets and stuff like that that's available, it's not necessarily that we use as exact one, but there's the technology out there, the suppliers are out there to use, so, just have a one small sample of what, so it might back to do. I've got some cards too, for everybody to see. Have any questions afterwards, if you have anything?
I can, without having to.
Okay.
I will, I'll go through. Any more questions, Eddie?
Yeah.
Well, just seeing if you're concerned of any interference like you brought up with nine-one-one on the tower, Matt, I mean, what type of testing do you do?
We can easily throw some stuff up with some batteries right away and, uh, you know, and work with whoever we need to work with and see what kind of interference they're looking, looking at, you know, whenever we power our stuff up. And we can move it, we can, there's a few different options we could do to try and work around it, or if we say no, it's gonna interfere, let's not do it, and, you know, we would do that before we get too permanent with our stuff.
And do you have, uh, what happens at, at every home site?
How do we install the home? Yep, so what we'll do is, we install a dish on the outside of the home and we run a cable inside, and that's, that's where you see a good permanent link, you know, if, if, some of the devices that, that you actually have that just go inside, inside only, they don't travel through walls very well and so, so it's a little bit better of a scenario if you have that antenna outside the home. So we'll do that and we'll take a cable inside and hook it into a router and off the run.
We'll discuss it a moment, so we get back to you, if that, uh, you know, we're going to go through the night anyhow, and we can discuss on that and stuff.
Okay.
Possibilities.
Sure, and I'm, you know, another thing, I'm in Perryville, so I'm a phone call, you know, if there's ever concerns or problems along the way, um, you know, I'm the.
We could add some more questions, if anything, maybe you could happen on the phone?
Sure. Absolutely.
It, it seems okay, look at it.
Gives another choice.
Yeah.
Such as in heaven, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And then we're just gonna go on with the meeting.
Sounds good.
We, we'll get with you.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
We'll drive there before the end of the month, you know, with it, if we can get stuff going, let's see, find out, whatever we get, when we know what to think about it.
Sure.
We'll get with you.
Okay. Well, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
All right.
I had a, was at a meeting with somebody that I know for several years, and she's in the state government, and she's with the Department of Economic Development, and she's also a Delph, just recently appointed to the Delta Regional Authority by the governor. And she was talking about some grants in general, and, you know, there's acronyms everywhere, and I can't remember what it is, but, through the Delta Regional Authority, she was talking about some grants and the funds come from the federal government, but she said last year there was only one applicant from the state of Missouri. And she was kind of disappointed with what she seen in the paperwork, so, uh, you know, in my mind, the alarm bells went off on St. Mary wastewater system. So after the meeting I grabbed her, we, we kind of talked a little bit about it, and I tried to fill her in, what little I know, which is very little admittedly. And, you know, I know you tried, I think it could be in R, did you, once before?
Which I, uh, charter rate drive white.
Okay.
Black here, then we refuse both times.
Okay. But here's the thing, different groups use different hoops, you know, I guarantee you enough, okay, I promise you nothing, but the idea, the idea is, I kind of discussed it with her and, you know, I, I think one of your problems is having matching funds, which I get, she didn't seem too concerned about that, so, here's the thing, why I'm coming to you tonight, I'm willing, if, if you're interested in possibly getting a grant on that, I'm willing to try to get her here, maybe at your next meeting, I mean, she's the one that needs to talk to you, when it's really said and done, I just, I'm just trying to connect you folks, I know you need help, I wanna give you help, if I can do it. So if you're interested, I can try to get her here, maybe at the next, you know, Alderman meeting, uh, where she can talk to you. If she can't, maybe we can set up some other meetings some other time, where she can come and talk to you and maybe find out, give you the prerequisites, maybe come to a meeting of minds. I mean, it's, there's nothing really complicated when I'm saying, it's just, you know, I'm around these different meetings and I pick up on these people and I've known her for several years, so, um, you know, I'm willing to help and sound if I can on that, if you're interested, you know.
We got this, we got.
I, I understand, I get it, I mean, I get it.
I don't understand why that, them, though charter rates go many a rent, you know, and.
Right.
Cases and that, and I don't believe either city and the state ain't worth all three or four, keep, we should, we've got a rate that's how we go. And everything that we try to do is borrowing money and the rates and things, and everyone, and shows we got a rate increase.
Well.
We did, about raised ourself up.
And, and that was the one main concern she mentioned, I don't know what your rates are, again, that's between, you know, her, on something like that.
Well, they're maybe fifty-three, something like that, right now.
Okay.
That's water and sewer.
Yeah, and I, so.
Two or three total water.
But, you know, again, I can, I can try to set you up a meeting.
That would be awesome.
Okay, I'll do that, I will do that for all that, I'll, I'll give you a clue on that, and, uh, I mean, that's, that's really all I have, I, well, has anybody told you Mo Doc? Has anybody talked to Mo Doc?
I, I think Mo Doc, that they come down here and pick out and show us everything they're gonna do and I seen them truck down there, they had no equipment, I don't even know what they were doing, they were backing forward, they had lined up one lane road, but I never seen that.
Well, I talked to Brad Hanson, the guy that's in charge of the area, and he come down and did some shots of greens, you know, to get an idea of the elevations. And he is, he said that they are gonna replace some of those culverts, you're concerned about it there?
Up these streets.
Yeah, up these streets, and redo something on Sycamore down here with that culvert or something like that. I'm not sure what all he's gonna do, but he said it would be late in the spring, I mean, they got other things that they're having to deal with.
I've been trying to get it for twenty years, so the spring is real close.
Yeah.
That's a good one, you saw the trip, you know, are you gonna get everything you want, probably not, but maybe there's some improvements there.
I just know they clean out the ditch the whole way down here and the culvert, uh, they take the debris out of the culvert the whole way down sixty-one, and all these are there, they're, they're culverts, I mean, that they never rather, they're ditched, nothing, they, I always told them for years, you gotta set the same thing down with sewer and your ditching, we ain't going to. And I didn't, when one day it was a sewer, when it, eight, eight something, wasn't it?
Eight.
Eighty-five, eighty-six, we docked all that big butcher, I get to kill, left over sewer in the ditch, 'cause they, they tried seeing that one or two times, but it flowed into the culvert, so they don't do it anymore. Well, I had very little faith in them, I would like to have.
Right.
But, I mean, I apologize to anybody, but most of these people here, I didn't been here as long as I have, and I dealt with this issue, and we've tried everything and nothing has worked.
Well, Brad Hanson, that is kind of in charge of the shed for this area, he's just taken that over. And he seems to be very, very easy to work with, good to work with, so I'm encouraged, not only you but us, you know, how, how it's working out, I mean, he's been very easy to talk to and easy to work with. So, yeah, as far as I can tell, he's, he's probably, they're gonna be doing some stuff.
Yeah, I don't wanna alienate him and nothing like that, but it, I don't know, you just can't realize how many problems I've had.
Yeah.
Through being Alderman and mayor and everything, 'cause it's always been a problem. But now it's getting terrible, I mean, whenever we get a small rain, this back and after, in the, well, it gets in my life, it just goes up on the street in the middle of the AM, we can't go through, we gotta go over. And it's getting serious.
Well.
But I appreciate it.
Something's apparently gonna happen, like, he said light this spring.
Well, you won't have, you won't have to stay over for a close session, I think we.
It don't matter, I mean, I can.
We got another one on that.
If, if you want me to.
I don't think it would do any purpose, anyway, we're cold, we're talking about the food thing and everything, and when, maybe whenever that lady comes down, you can come down and.
Okay, I, I have no problem with that.
Even if she can't, I can get to the next board meeting.
Right.
Set up a meeting like on a, uh, a Wednesday, I'm normally off.
We can, yeah, we can try to accommodate her if you can.
Sure.
Yeah, whatever we work best for her.
But we're in serious desperate need, and we.
No, I get it.
And I did, I, I did, there's no way that these people can take any more rate increase, they didn't even do it.
Okay, well, uh, I will call her tomorrow and I start, start the process.
Our system is on a COVID twenty-year system, we're about thirty-two years, isn't it? Right now, we got eight winters down, eight down, we don't have a bracket, we're pumping it out, but, we got something working on that, we're, we're gonna take care of some of that, but it'll be through, through other sources, we won't be in debt.
And, and like I said, I'm not guaranteeing enough.
Of course, I know.
I, you know, I hope, I hope I don't get your hooks up in the mouth.
Yeah, that's it, we don't get our hooks up. We've learned not to get our hooks up.
Okay, all right.
But I see people getting a lot of grants for a lot of silly things, and I don't think they're doing half of it as near important as what we need. Some of them are grant for loans, hardly needed.
Oh, by the way, that bridge there, well, it's called Franklin Bridge, it is in the engineering process right now.
Really?
Yeah, so, that, you know, that's gonna take a while, yeah, BRO funding takes forever, it seems like on those, but it is, it is in process and it is planned, so.
What do you know about the bridge crossing over Chester?
I don't know a whole lot, I mean, they, they do mention it, some of the things we're at, it's, I mean, they're, they're moving along pretty good, I think they really had a quick start because the river was so low, I mean, that does make a difference.
That probably helps.
You know, and I, I think they start, I think they kind of are actually ahead of schedule, so it's good because of that, I haven't heard anything.
I'm personally surprised they've done it, I don't know if he's done it.
But, yeah, they're all bad. Well, you know, it's been dry, so that, you know, river's low and then the ground's dry, not like, moving out so much, but it has been, so that makes them move faster.
Any more questions, more, any questions tomorrow? You're welcome, I'm taking.
Keep in contact with me.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let you know when I come up with something, what, what she can.
If you can't make our meeting, then we'll decide to accommodate.
What's, what's the day of the next meeting?
Second, third day of, uh.
March, uh.
March.
Uh, March fourteenth.
Okay.
This is the earliest way I have one, then that month, but you're late.
Yeah.
Okay.
March, are you a liberty, do I involve that person's name?
Leslie Brown is her name, uh, yeah, I was, it was a big secret, I just, you know, but, uh, yeah, she's, she's been around quite a long time, state government, so, so, I'm hoping that it pans out well for some things we're trying to do, so.
We need funding, but we are also, we, we need a new service, you know, I understand, but, but we need the funding to work with what we got. These guys are going down left and right, they're going, they're about to live their life, all that, but, we'll just take what we get. But we would like to, you know, if, if she would and can and move as fast as possible, because the need is big, really. The chamber's gonna help her some, but they don't do so much, they can't run the city.
Right.
But they can help us try to keep her head above the water. Okay, is that it?
That's it for me.
I thank people coming down.
Yeah, thank you, I love it.
You're in my district, you're my, I, you know, anybody in my district's my responsibility, actually, anybody in my county's my responsibility, as far as I'm concerned, so.
We like, man, we are, we got water, but we, we the whole city, and the water too, we did it with the help of, they water one and one way, we hit, it's all our water, it's just the way they elected. Okay, I'm training business now, you're business now, emergency management, she gonna tell me now, but she was going all day anyhow, she gonna give a report on it.
I think they report.
We have a flood or something, she gonna give a report on it.
I hope she never has to give that.
Oh, I'm not.
Please, department.
I've never received any reports from her, with our coverage.
He's asked.
He was here yesterday.
Yeah.
The only, did you get the doctor about the war?
Uh, I did.
You did?
Yeah, I, I told him.
I'm getting a report out of Newt District, that they're flying, uh, somebody down there flying out there all the time and over by, uh, Tegel I, what you call it, Tegel I, what you named that, but anyhow, looks like a drag ship over there, the all-black mark, and pretty, and, of course, that's probably ten o'clock at night, and ain't nobody ever hear that, but it's speeding through the suburb, and I say, mostly come from the backside, I heard a report of a blue truck that flies through all the time, I found that out since I talked to you. But I think one day they, one day they come flying down, like, that we even close that stop line, great, the bay was there, then where I threw this two-way stop, thirty, forty miles an hour, they didn't even look, they, they knocked it in there, they just, I guess they take that still four-way stop, and of course, that's when they were.
And it mattered, he's got a stop.
So, he, he, I really wanted to maybe go up there and talk to some of them, if they're giving us. So, he, he, I really want him to maybe go up there and talk to some of them, if they give him a description where he can go talk to somebody. Yeah, I know he can't always be able to give a ticket, but he could talk to somebody. And slow them down or, and but, it's the people that, if we don't, may have quick speed bumps out there now, nobody ain't gonna want that. We talked about that once before, and it slowed everybody down, and nobody liked them speeding, but if, if I get to the thousand, without a full-time cop, that may be one of our other answers. And they, they don't lie, they said, well, tell us who we're doing it, and then we'll, we can work it out, because I don't think it's necessarily an outside person doing it. I think it's somebody living back around, I can think of a couple of them, I ain't gonna say them right now. But I know ideas for the speed down on that street there, and I don't, I suspect people drive a little bit over feeling, when they're down forty miles an hour, down, their kids are out in the streets and things, and them guys from the airport out there, they come in and eat dinner. They only got thirty minutes from the airport to bather, eat, and go back. And they make up a lot of, because they're about forty miles an hour now, down Third Street. Why they come down Third Street, I don't know, they can drive forty-five around this one, go out in the back, walk in. That's the same thing about people who work up there naturally, they go through that one of these stop signs and hide them from speed. I mean, instead of going all the way around, I ain't going around.
Yeah.
They can go around that way and there's not a stop sign all the way to the manager. They come through here and you got all them stop signs, but they fly through this. All right, what?
He's still digging up speed.
Not yet.
Okay.
Had seven calls, we had six medical calls, one mutual aid call, um, we're in the process of, uh, our tins ordered for our meeting room and our bag that we've been working on. Um, that is delivered tomorrow, so whenever we put our tin up and everything, start getting our meeting room back in order. And I'm, uh, we're down there, uh, everything's been going good, not going well.
Oh, is the birthday holding up on that, I mean, how you doing?
Good, the chamber's helped us out with a little bit of that, and basically the cost of the tin and stuff, basically took that.
Are you going to do more or?
I don't know, I mean.
I'm sure it's.
I'm doing some duty, so.
Everybody on the chamber's been on fire, I mean, hopefully, I.
Chamber turned around and, uh, he mounted some new floodlights that we got, uh, they're LED floodlights, one on our forty-one. Started mounting them, uh, they're one-ten lights, uh, because we basically wanted to run off our generators, that having, uh, a converter to go over to twelve volt and all that, so. Uh, we installed two of them, they're really bright, so we're deciding that we're gonna buy for all the trucks. And actually, it looks like daylight when we're standing here, and that's what we need while we're working around. Uh, so, that's, they work really good, so, yeah, hopefully after we get forty-one down with them, or go over to forty-two and do their lights and couldn't beat the price on them, I mean, fifty bucks a light, but they are definitely bright, that's what we want, so. But other than that, everything's going kosher, we did talk about having our stream bar queue at our last meeting. We haven't said it yet, we're still kind of pushing it around. Um, so, uh, making sure I got everybody that helps there to help. Meat prices and stuff in North, I mean, I try to keep my plates the same amount, so, uh, but we're still talking about that and that. Other than that, everything's been pretty well kosher with everything else, uh, so the guy's been helping me out a lot up there, doing a lot of stuff to fire it up, so. That's all I have on that board.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Three?
Nothing new to report, I had a request of, uh, on Sycamore, that terminal still gets bogged out, you know, there's truck tracks through there all the time, so. It says local traffic only, but I think we need no commercial vehicle or no trucks allowed or something in the bottom of the street, so.
I don't have a problem with that. They don't read them, you, but they do, they give them a ticket, but, well, you, you give one ticket, then they're, they're ordered to get out there, quit doing it.
Well, we might have to get a new sign, because there used to be no truck traffic, it's supposed to go up that hill, uh, somebody, they got knocked down or something, because there used to be one right there. Before you pulled off sixty-one to go up it, because a lot of the, the commercial trucks would bottom out.
Mine were, they, they don't go up that hill.
I've seen them do it.
I did, they're GPS probably they do.
Yeah, that's exactly.
GPS.
Mm-hmm, they're thinking they're going to Mary Claire.
They got a semi come up there one time, it was pretty scary.
That boy, we just put a, a pretty good size on truck, but, especially on the bottom down there, over there, you'd be pissed the most. When they get up there, they probably go back the other way, they'll take that back down. We'll, we'll get up, damn it, it's working tomorrow, I don't know if we got one up, we have one.
Yes, we do.
I don't want one, you can't really want one, Ben. Man, we put one on top too, I mean.
Probably both ways, by Locust and Fort, by Locust and Fort, so they don't.
Yeah, we put a, start Locust up there at, uh, Fourth Street and, uh, down sixty-one. They can't get there in the old way, let the cut through the old school yard. Okay, anything else?
Uh, no.
Well, I know there's a come in tomorrow, we're trying to get a, a belt, I mean, a chain for the damn spreader, we ain't had much luck though. I don't know, maybe you get older, they probably, maybe they could give us that, of course, those spreaders are bigger than ours, but they make, I don't know.
Did you tell Dennis that you knew a place in St. Louis that?
Westover.
Westover?
Heard. Hang on.
Me, where it is, I don't.
Western, Western Peter, they are down, I have to look it back up.
Okay.
They sell some old files and.
We got the old chain out, got the medicine to lay.
I've got the medicine and everything.
Yeah, I do now.
I just can't find.
Because that, that spreader there came from Iowa, and it's a highway, so you might have to call the minimum side of it, then call up the Iowa and get it.
I call.
Yeah.
You did, or you?
I did.
They, they, yeah.
They said I had to go through a local dealer.
They have local.
I'll have to find a local dealer that does the highway.
I've been talking.
They got a local dealer does the same with us.
Okay, I'll have, I'll have to do some more research. Okay.
I might have a big one up one day, I don't remember, but they did that whole thing. That's the one we're using now, I guess. Anything else, three? Water, what you got?
I have nothing on that board.
Yep.
We've done talked about a lot of it.
Yeah, we're the same, we already know about the driver, we already, what else is there?
I ain't saying anything going good, but the water's been doing pretty good, we ain't had no.
You better, you better knock on that desk, or.
We ain't had no major breaks like the monkey did, not, not talking about things that maybe, but they had all kinds of problems, but. And the city, I don't know why we got by without, but.
Anyway, we did, carry on, yeah. Speed.
I didn't, I haven't recorded.
Road is right.
We already said that.
Yeah, we already ducked down.
But you broke it down, I mean.
No, you should go over to his park, go. Parks?
Park them through, and.
Okay, I have a meeting scheduled for this coming week on the park, and I'll report on that after that. Nothing, uh, on the cemetery here, I'm on the job.
I had to go down there and take the truck, mailman, the grapevine hanging down, going down there, couldn't even, even like it, I think the truck go put a grapevine down, going down there. I can't believe she hadn't called me on that road, went back to the park.
Oh.
Jack stopped me, you know, he said he'd pull it down, and I tried to, but I just throw the chain around. I got on, so I went up to the top of the hill before I got it all out. But I ain't heard no complaints on being locked from anybody.
We need to do something about these animals running at large all the time. I've got so much dog crap in my yard and I shouldn't have any dog crap in my yard.
I swear I got ten dogs, because I'm a, I don't own a dog.
Exactly.
And we got the same three or four people that dogs are doing.
Yep.
Uh, I don't see David down there anymore, because we don't have dog pictures, but they can, they come out, but, you know, I don't know. I think if, if I picked up a dog so many times, that they should be able to take the dog away from them when they do that.
Yep.
You know, they put you in jail if they do that, they might let you go first up there, but then eventually they put you in jail. But, but it, it's our greatest cats and dogs within this town.
Yep. Yeah, I, there, there shouldn't be calls of dog crap in my yard, I don't have a dog, there's not even any dogs.
One of them, one of them like go in front of my dumpster, I ain't never seen it. Hope to do someday, but I ain't never seen it, but, ain't the back way through the dumpster, I gotta go in the front way, but.
Yeah.
Of course, I won't look, no, I don't.
I just can't imagine being in jail and telling my cellmate that my dog got me in there.
That's what I mean, it was, it's, it's against the law for animals running, it's a good law, it's a legal law, every city and the state's got it. And then, of course, they got dog pounds and things, but we, we used to have, but then they were already humane, so, you know, so we couldn't do that.
And any fines that are generated from stuff like that has to go through the court system too, right? You gotta take it, go to court.
But if you're, if you're getting people built for them, they start to play a game.
Sure.
They probably need to find out who owns the dogs.
But our, we're, we're coming in, all our brothers got, we got to leave the mountain fires and get them in.
Yeah, dog days.
He won't let us raise dogs. Think they're ready to raise them, but we give them less, they won't do it, we give about three hours out of the park. Dog, where you free for me? Okay, is there a search for participations and?
Yeah, I got, I got one thing, got a coyote, uh, coming out Fifth Street from my house, come up there to, uh, Sycamore. Looking to the right, uh, to the left, you have to almost be out even at.
I'm sure they, I knew you did.
Yeah, you almost have to be out in the street, it is winter time, there's no foliage on them, okay, under vegetation. Imagine what it's like in the summertime, is there something, I don't know if that, that would be Eastman? Or I don't know who actually owns that, if that's.
That's the city.
The city?
And, and that don't turn over the paddles, they go all around the curb, I would say, well, I think I'm.
But what I'm saying, is that private or is that Eastman or?
Yeah, how far back off of the road is it, is what is, gonna determine that.
I think you could, ten foot, probably.
That's probably a thirty-foot street there, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, ten foot from the road, I think in between off would be that improvement, so.
I get with, uh, Dr. Hockley, you and, uh, maybe you and, uh, Dennis, uh, sure get together and see what they can do on that corner. Because I think it's a day I come down, I go around a bit in between, going down, checking on the people to treat the last and everything.
I could run over in the morning with them.
We'll look into it.
Thank you.
Yeah, touch now, the motion.
I made a motion to adjourn this meeting, I'll start.
Will you make it on paper?
Uh, aye.
The vote.